And he's come back to us, it was here before, that y'all request, Lightning Derrick's request, to ask some questions that we didn't know the answer to. And I told Derrick he can be sure and answer all these questions he can. And this is what it's a workshop, it's a workshop for, for the council. And so any of y'all, the council, that anybody that want to ask him, if that's what he's here for.
I will try to, and we're here to try to make y'all a sustainable system. And right now, y'all are not, we've already gone through the sewer, the sewer was, was sustainable. We're good with sewer. But we, in the water side, we're, we're lacking lots of funds. And we can't keep working this way. One of the things that you got to keep in mind is the state's not going to let you keep working in the red. They're not, they're not going to allow it. You know, we, you don't want to, you don't want no repercussions to that. Another thing that's coming down right now is too, all your monies in your sewer and water have to start staying in sewer and water. And I don't think y'all have a problem there. I think y'all don't, y'all don't take, you don't have the money, the funds in the water system to put anywhere else. You know, a lot of people do it so it breaks the water system. So we're looking at your sewer rates, or water rates, I'm sorry. So we'll get, we'll get started here in just a second, but I think...
That you explained how the, that it has to sustain itself, that all that money, and right now, our water system simply is in the red.
That's correct.
And the sewer system's kind of eating back into it, but it doesn't need to, it's not...
It doesn't, it doesn't need to, so, you know, we, right now, we've, and you can't keep operating in the red, so, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to bring up the, the water rate. Now, one of the things is y'all haven't had to do a lot of work in the past on the water, so you have extremely high debt in the water. That's one of our, one of our problems.
That's one reason we're a C.
Sir?
That's one reason we're a C.
That's the, that's correct.
That's the big reason. Not the water problem.
Actually, he is, if they've taken this monthly, we've taken this monthly note, and we've divided that by the number of customers. So the bill, the first twenty dollars and eighty-one cents goes to fill the note. So any questions? Right there, let's just go through this, and then we can go back and ask the question. So let's go to the next section. Your expenses, your expenses right here, we got, we got a total on them. Your, this is your, what we call your O and M cost. This is the, when I start talking, I want to start talking about debt service, that's going to be your notice. When I talk about O and M costs, I'm going to be covering this number right here, it's seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. That is, that is how much money it takes to operate the water system. Your electricity, your chemicals, your personnel, your billing, all that. So we've got seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars that we have in, that we budgeted actually for the water system. Revenues, right here, your revenues, you're bringing in like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So you're having a big loss. So this, this right here is just, do them for the, this is our customer base, which is, you've actually got like twenty-three hundred customers in your system. This right here is the number of gallons, this is the number of gallons, which one is, this one's, first one is produced, right, yeah, first one is produced, no?
Yeah, one-hundred-and-eighty-five.
One-hundred-and-eighty-five.
Yeah, and one-hundred-and-thirteen, so. So what we have then is a water loss of eighty-eight million gallons. Now, when we talk about water loss, that can be within leaks, flushing, fire protection, you know, if you have a lot of fire, that could be something. Also, some of this could be in old meters, because the meter is not going to speed up, they're all going to slow down.
Didn't they say in that seminar we were just in, that the flushing didn't count as a loss?
You can, you can count flushing, actually, you can count it as, as part of the process, but you have to, you have to calculate it. But it's still money, it's still water that you've had to use that you can't sell. But you also have to have so much flushing to keep good water out there. So, so, yeah, but it's, it's not, really, you can not count it as a loss, you can count it maybe as an unaccounted, unaccounted loss. So thirty-seven percent, eighteen is a good number. We have, but what concerns us most is down here, come down a little further. You have right here, this is the number, this is your residential monthly average. So your average residential user is thirty-seven hundred gallons a month. Most of the time, you're going to find out, on most systems, it's forty-five hundred to five thousand gallons. So that might tell me, some of it might be in meters too. Because with that comes, that figure comes off your billing report, which is actually how much the meters were billed versus their usage. So, so that's where we get that number. So it's not, that's not in any of the loss, that is, that would be just, it's, we're not registering anything. The loss could be, now, a thousand gallons a month might not be registered through meters. So, so you follow with me there? Okay. So this is where we come up with the rates. But David, this is where we are right now, right?
Right.
Okay. So we got nineteen-hundred and one customer, and we're charging twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents a month. That's a flat rate, and then we have two thousand gallons, and then after that, we charge five fifty. This is your average bill for your residential. So thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents is what your average customer uses. Now, your person that uses very little water, less than two thousand, they only have to pay twenty-three, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-three forty-seven. But your average customer is thirty-two. Commercial connections, you got, you got ninety-eight commercial customers, thirty dollars and sixty-six, six fifty. We got a residential outside there at forty and sixty. So that's your rate structure. So where you are now, you're producing one million, all right, let's see, your revenues? So we're, we're producing one million dollars with this rate. But we've got thirteen million, one point three million in expenses. So we're losing right at little over quarter of a million dollars a month, a year. That puts you at a sustainable rate of point seven-nine. And this is the figure we're looking at, and we're going to talk a lot about it. That's your sustainable figure. And to put it in real simple terms, for every dollar you're putting out for your water system, you're bringing in seventy-nine cents. So that's where we are right now. Any questions?
Probably one point one five and five.
Yeah, if you're going to get, if you're going to get any kind of a grant from C W G, Water Sector, anything like that, you're going to have to be at a one point one five. So that means for every dollar that you put out, you've got to bring in a dollar and fifteen cents. To be a sustainable system, I mean, with this size, even if you made it to one point one oh, you, you're getting by, but you're not, you're not going to be able to grow. One of the things that has hurt us, I mean, probably just hurt everybody. But we've got, we've got to do something here. We cannot keep losing this kind of money.
We, we had looked at one point one one, I think is what we looked at before.
I think, okay, what were those, is that?
This is what we did before, yeah, that's what we decided we need to go with. But I'm wondering now if you needed like one more point five?
Well, I would, I mean...
Instead of that?
This is y'all's decision. I mean, but, yeah, it's, it's your decision. But, you know, I don't recommend, but I would suggest it be at least one point one five. I mean, we're, we're in times now where, you know, two months ago, you were buying gas almost a dollar cheaper than what it is now. And believe it or not, your trucks here run off of gas, and they have, you're having to overcome that. So, I mean, you've got to have some cushion in there, a little bit of cushion.
I have a question. You were talking about the meter, right? I thought we had new meter, sixteen years ago. Oh...
Now, let me tell you something about a meter. A meter, the life of a meter is about a million to a million and a half gallons. And then they start slowing down to, they start slowing down to a million, but, but it takes a long time. But about, after it goes about a million to some over, they'll start slowing down to where it's a noticeable difference. Okay? So a million gallons, if you start doing it fifteen years on the average customer, is about a million plus. So you're, you're, you're at the point where you're probably starting to see some of this repercussions with, with old meters.
They recommend you replace your meters every ten, ten years.
Yeah.
What does that cost?
Well... Again, here's the problem. One of our problems is we've got high debt. Should we go into debt to buy new meters? You know, I mean...
I was just asking, because I knew that at one point in time when he had had one meter. And now they're depreciating.
That's right. Now, a lot of towns try to do a meter change out, where actually, they kind of take roughly a tenth of the system, and they're changing that this year. And then the next year, they'll change out another. And then after, after you make the cycle, then the next year, you can start back, and you don't have to swallow that bullet all at one time.
Then the water system needs to make the money, extra money to be able to do something.
That's right, that's right.
I was just asking a question.
But, but...
If you got there based on if those meters aren't a good problem, which you use a daily amount of time?
The chances.
So if they're working, if all of them are working a hundred percent, then that number would look a whole lot better?
Not a whole lot better. It would, it would, it would be better. But it would, that's not going to solve your problem.
Right, right.
That's, that's going to be, that's, that's a part of the problem, but it's, it wouldn't even be half, I don't think.
There was a question in that last time we spoke, we came up, and we talked about the possibility of these apartments and all having, one, legally is legal, or you charge that as a commercial rate with that one meters?
Yes, and, and, it's what we call EDUs, equivalent dwelling unit. So we're talking about something that's equivalent to a dwelling unit. And this is something, and I was trying to get USDA to give me, they have, they have some formulas that they use. But what it actually is, is if you've got a set of apartments that are, that are under a master meter. So you have an apartment that, a complex that has thirty-two apartments, and you charge them thirty dollars plus usage. But you've got thirty-two households that are living there, and they're getting by where you've got a house over here that pays twenty-eight ninety-six. So what, what they call equivalent dwelling units is, so that apartment complex is, you'll take this twenty-eight ninety-six, multiply it times the number of units, and that would be that flat rate for that apartment complex.
So basically, you have, you have a hundred and a hundred apartments, and it would be a hundred and one cent, thirty dollars. So around three thousand dollars a month.
That's correct. That's correct. And, and what they're saying is, and that's the same, when you start really looking at rates, one of the, it, it, no, it's the way you start out figuring rates, and you have to tweak it back and forth. But your flat rate generally should cover your, your O and M cost and your base rate cost, or your future, like for your reserves and stuff. And then your per thousand would cover your O and M cost.
What have you seen out there in towns and other towns, except for, are other towns that have a decision with the one meter on them, that they use this formula?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, what, what you're going to have to do is, you're going to have to, you actually have to change your class codes. And, 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 to, to do this, and so each apartment will have its own class code, because they have different number of units.
Right, so get a hundred and fifty class code, ten.
Ten. And if you, and if you have one that's got thirty-two, then that would be another class code. And they'll be paying the same per unit, it's just they're paying for more units or less. Trailer park, anything that's got a dwelling unit that's master metered. I mean, if you have, and, and, you know, the, the, I think the best way for y'all to do it is to let them, each trailer, each apartment have their own. But when they're, they're built, they can't do that now, and it would cost you mega money to come in and start putting in new meters. This way, the same thing, you're just going to have to tell the landowner, and they're going to have to go up on their price to cover that cost.
Does that affect, uh, goes to, uh, rent control or the rent, uh...
Government housing.
Does USDA rule that way?
Any, any, any single metered complex.
So you say single meter, you're talking about one meter.
One meter does its whole complex.
And they pay one rate, so tell me what rate they pay? Well, surely they're not paying that so many sometimes.
Right, definitely are.
Oh, good God, no, no, no. You can't do that. You can't do that.
Somebody told me...
Yes, ma'am.
You can't do that.
Somebody said to me that government housing, it would be against the law for us to change.
There's, uh, there's a lot of places that are, I mean...
I'm just, I'm just...
I'm telling you, and, and, and this is, USDA goes along with this. I mean, they understand, they think this is the fair way, because what's happening is it's still a dwelling unit that's not paying, we always want to talk about the little old lady on fixed income. So the little old lady on fixed income is paying thirty dollars for a flat rate. And this apartment complex that has a hundred units are paying thirty dollars. So you divide that, they're paying less than a dollar just from the flat rate in, when you start combining, so...
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, how do the silent codes, they pay a water bill, they used to. In their apartments down there, I don't know if they changed over or the process of that. But these people, they pay the water bill.
Now, now, there are apartment complexes that are singly, sing, not a single meter, but each unit is, has its own meter. That's, that's fair, that's good.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah. You have to, you have to look at each complex and see how it was designed.
It's not fair to me, for all of those apartments over there, and I paid a hundred dollars a month almost for one hour. Yeah, I'm just, you know, eighty, ninety dollars per month.
Now, let me show you something there.
No.
That hospital is paying the same little commercial rate.
We need to reach renewal rate.
And now, and, and that's where I need to find, get a good formula for that. And USDA is going to try to get that to me. So, but, you know, the one way you can do the, do the apartment, the hospitals, the nursing homes and stuff like that, is you can take your average usage and divide that into how many gallons they use, and then that number would be what you would multiply the...
Right.
Right, right. Or you can come up with your own rate for the...
I'm going to ask you one more question, I'm not going to ask you nothing else.
No, you can ask me. When I leave here, I might not have any more answers, but, but let's answer the question.
Now, we have the data for how much water goes through the nursing home, how much water goes to the hospital, how much water goes to North Webster, you know, like the school. Now, we have something to say, this is how much water they use, because they know how much I use a month.
Well, they have, you have a model, they have, they can have a meter read.
Right, so you can take what you know they use, and do a median, you know, mode median, yeah, and, and get a, a rate?
Yeah. And there's other places that, that just go up with their own rates too, you know, but, but I mean, it's one of the...
Would you help us though, if we could get those things there, down, those major places, you know, like the Camelot's and, you know, the hospital, you know, wouldn't that help our number? You know, with the water?
What is it to do? What is...
It should, you would think. If they, everybody paying for a share, that's not a problem.
What we're talking about right now is just meter connection, that's going to get a...
Now, let me say this, this is good, you're, we're still going to have to go up on rates even if we're looking at this sort of thing. You're still going to have to make a big jump. But what we're talking about doing, see, so we've got nineteen-hundred people that are paying, oh, twenty-eight ninety-six. All right, now, here, that commercial, you've got probably, maybe, how many units you think you got? You got twenty? That might be single unit, single metered dwelling units?
We got three, maybe three apartment complexes, four, that are, that probably have, Harris, Harris has got what? Thirty, forty? What about across three? They got twenty or so, Camelot's got a hundred plus.
So what we're doing is, you're going to take that, and instead of you have nineteen-hundred times this amount, you're going to have twenty-three hundred times this amount. And we're not talking about just, we're talking about dwelling units. So these are units that people live in, and so that's, that's where we come up with the, with EDUs.
See, that's where you go back to the hospital, and that, you may not live there, it's a different...
It's, it's a different, you can't, you can't do the bid, because, you know, that, that hospital room might not use that much, and they're not living there. But we can, you can take the gallons to come up with a figure.
And that's where you...
That's, that's what we're, that's, that's what I'm trying to find out, the, the, there, there is a, there is a formula for that. And you, that would be like, you can't say that a nursing home is basically a dwelling unit. I mean, I know people live there, but it's, it's just single, but you can take their, that amount of money, that amount of gallons, and then come up with something.
And that's what you're saying, you know, that...
That, yeah. And, and, you know, I mean, it's going to make a difference to them, but call around and find out what some of these nursing homes are paying for a flat rate or for water to other places.
Yeah, I, I work for a hospital, so it's, you know, it's important to me, we watch every dollar. And, uh, we've got to do what's right.
Mm-hmm. But, yeah, I mean, it, it's just, but let me say something, the hospital on the water in the sewer is putting a bigger demand on the system than the dwellings do. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's...
Definitely the sewer.
Yeah. But let's get where we are right now.
That was my big question.
Yeah.
What do you find in out there, in these communities, as far as their water quality is affected? I went back and looked at the scores, and it looks like from us, one, we've lost points because of not being sustainable, and the other part is a training that later, Mike has gone through, and now I understand, because we all have to do that.
And let me say that, with, with the grading system, it's not that much about water quality. It's more about sustainability. And, and, you know, you can, you can have a sustainable system and have not really good quality water. Not that it would be unhealthy, it just might be undesirable. But that's not, that's not that much against you on the sustainability. It's, are we going to be able to keep this thing going? You know, so, so let, let's just look here, real quick. Dave, you plugged in? We, you didn't go up, but just on the per thousand.
No, I went to where you went, here, on the thousand and a half.
All right, what was that over?
Twenty-three forty-six. Close to thousand. The residential, but now, you're showing here nineteen ninety-six or smaller.
You mean they got twenty-five.
Should that be nineteen oh one? Oh, you're only five different. And we went from five fifty to seven fifty.
Five fifty to seven fifty, okay.
Twenty-three forty-six, twenty-eight.
I would read it at twenty-eight.
My gun's a little pretty glass.
So if you go up to, all right, back to your numbers, what was the, what was? This right here, with this rate, when you see this figure right here, this is what your average resident customer will pay. Forty, forty dollars and thirty-two cents. Now, we're not even at a sustainable rate, thank...
That's just the water rate too.
That's, yeah, this is, this is, we've not talked sewer or anything else. And, and I understand, y'all have garbage too, and it's all on the same bill, so they're not going to understand that, you know, but this is just water that we're talking about. But even making that jump, we're still under one, one, uh, point one, one point. So let's just, you went to ten, yes, okay.
Well, we're at ten.
All right. Let's just try something, scrub down this little bit. And I throw a number, if y'all want to look at any numbers, y'all let us know, we'll plug them in. Put this, put this thirty... Alright, put this sixty. So we could win aggressive, and we're still at a one-point-oh-seven. We're not really where we need to be. And, and those rates are, go back to this, this little number. So this one is thirty-two dollars and seven dollars and fifty-six per thousand, which you're, that would put you at a forty-three dollars for an average water bill. Now, before y'all have a stroke and say, we're the worst in the state, uh, we've got one that's fifty-three dollars right now for the flat rate and around eight-fifty per thousand. And, so, you know, I mean, don't compare yourself to other people, we can't control what's under the ground, and we can't compare what we've got in our system. They might have an old, new system, they might have had an old system that they kept up, y'all had to put a lot of money in at one time.
It says monthly minimum, including, it says two thousand, but it's one day. Monthly minimum.
So, is it, is it?
Right now, we're zero to two, the, the one, that when you came last time, we, where we got the sustainability factor of one-point-eleven, we dropped it zero to one.
Try, try, you dropped it to a thousand or, or zero?
Zero to one.
Okay.
Thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so put a thousand in.
That was where it was twenty-eight ninety-six, it's for residential.
Now, and I just pulled those other figures out, I don't know what we figured out on that, but see, now we're getting close to there, but go back up just a little bit. But your average bill's gonna be fifty bucks for water over.
Well, we, I think we need to do it one-point-one-five.
Five, so. So, let me ask you this then, y'all wanna look, so we need to come down just a little bit with this, how would y'all like to come down on it?
So, we were just talking about the equivalent dwelling units, how can you figure that is?
Well, what we're good, what would have to happen to that is, you don't have to go out and find every single metered dwelling unit, get a count, get a, get a number, then we'd figure, we'd have to figure on your, your nursing homes and your hospitals.
The way I need is, can we just play around with it and say that number's one?
Well, I, the, the, probably, I don't know what, we, that's some unknowns that. That, my thing.
One thirty-six.
Hmm?
Between the two complexes, it's one-oh-four and thirty-two, so it's a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-six.
Okay, but what about trailer parks?
I'm just dealing with the parks.
Yeah.
But we do have Ratliff Trail Park down the street here, uh, uh, whatever the trail parks.
Ratliff's got their own, but you got Will Lems got a trailer park down there.
Cool.
Will Lems got a little trailer park.
But then, but then your other big users, the hospitals, the nursing home, your schools. I, I understand that the schools are paying the same, flat rate. So.
Are the schools your own board?
Yes.
So, last time you was here, you said we had, we need to put them in categories.
We're gonna, and we got to categor- categorize everything to be the same.
Right, so who responsible for doing that?
Spring Hill.
Oh, the mayor is?
Hmm, no.
No, I'm saying, do we have like, somebody to go out and do it?
You're gonna have to do a survey of your system.
Right.
I mean, and.
You gotta find all the apartment complexes, the nursing home, the hospital, what about hotels?
Your, your hotels, that, that you're gonna probably have to do the same as the hospital with, with her gallons. And so then we'd have to get all of that information together, and, David, I mean, we can, we can kind of help once we get the information together, to put that together, but.
So basically, it's five districts.
Okay, so we.
And we divide up the districts, I know, I'm just saying that we can divide them out for five people, like we did for Main Street when we had to go out and survey.
Well, and, and I, I mean, now, now the, the dwelling units on the, on the single meter dwelling units, that's no problem, I mean, we don't have to have a form of that, we just have to have a count.
Yeah, just, just on those.
The, 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 yeah, the hospitals, the nursing homes, the, the schools, the hotels, yeah.
That, that would give us more idea of where.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But we need to go ahead and add the rate increase now.
That's the extra.
I, I, I mean, you're losing money. And you can't keep losing money, you got dinged on your grading system because you're losing money, and you keep on, and legislative officer comes in here, I'll tell you this real quick. Y'all can sit here and say, we don't wanna do it, and that legislative officer says, I'll make it sixty dollars, you can slam them, and it's done. I mean, I, I just threw that figure out, so, but, but, yeah.
We don't have any control at all.
You won't have any control till it gets back up to where it needs to be, and then you say, now y'all can make it back over. Uh, the, the big myth is, a lot of people think that towns can't go bankrupt, you know, I mean, so. And, and I'm not saying y'all were there, but I'm saying if we don't do anything, we are gonna be there, so.
Is there a way to build these meters, load tests, or anything like that on each one, or is that something that's?
We can, we can do a, a, we can come in and do a meter binge test, go back, and we'll need so many meters pulled that we can test them, and then we can tell you how much, approximately, how much revenue you're losing, or how much water you're losing through falling meters. Uh, and, and, let me say this, this is all averages, but averages still count. That's gonna be averages with the average count. And what we do is, we'll come in and we'll test those meters, and we test, when you test a water meter, you test it at three different rates, you test them at a high flow, a low flow, and a medium flow. And most of the time, even that, an old meter's gonna register pretty high in the nineties on a high flow. It's gonna, it's gonna register pretty good on a high flow. Where you're gonna get hit is on your medium and your low flow. So what's happening is, every time you flush a commode, that's gonna be a low flow, and it's not gonna register. But three gallons went through, how many times are those commodes gonna be flushed? You know, turn the faucet off for just a little bit and turn it off, it's gonna be a low flow, so it's not gonna be registered. You turn the bathtub wide open, it will register that. So, so we can test it, and, and we can come in and tell you a good approximate of how much, how many gallons you are, if we just do a random amount, but probably, David, it might be sixty or seventy meters we need to test to get a good accurate.
That's an additional cost.
Man, turn.
That's an additional cost to what we're paying them.
For the, for the big, big sales, anything losing a little water does that's free of charge, y'all, because y'all members need separate, but you do our portion. So that would be free, the only thing y'all would have, the only cost to y'all would be to pull the lead and put it back in.
When he comes up here and talks to the nursing home.
But we, we go give him a lot of smoke tests with y'all, running cameras, that's all free charge. Anything we do is free charge, except for on the thirty, but your tax dollars still help us, and, so, so that's free. So, so, so take advantage of it, somebody's gonna get it, just we'll be y'all.
Another, another thing too, I'm taking the numbers while y'all are talking and discussing all this. Have you had a one-point-one-five right now with the rates at a, at a one-thousand gallon minimum? I've got you there, but this will be your, your rates, so in order to do that, be looking at from twenty-three forty-six and thirty-dollar minimum, and a five fifty to seven-twenty-five, that's on your residential.
Do that, do that on the, on the, on commercials.
Do the one, the one thousand?
Yeah, just one thousand, so that's the way that does.
Okay, I'll bring you up to a one-point-one-eight. With the rates, be on your, let me back up, thirty and seven-twenty-five. Average resident building, forty-eight fourteen, commercial connection with two forty-seven eleven, drop into a thousand gallon minimum. And sixty, from thirty sixty to sixty, and ten thousand, around ten dollars a thousand after that. Residential outside, you have ninety-five, dropping that to a thousand minimum, with forty, actually went down, forty-eighty to forty. So we can leave that at forty-eighty, and, uh, it's already paying that, this is up to y'all, ready or not. And but, a charge for thousand gallons is eight dollars. And by doing that, this is a bulk rate here, so it's really not gonna be a lot on the, by doing that, puts you at a one-point-one-eight, which will afford you to drop something a little bit lower, just a little bit.
Drop the residential.
Residential. Do you wanna, do you wanna look at the residential for thousand or the minimum?
And, and once they give a, a commercial rate, and it's not really a comfort tool, but they do have, they do have means of recouping there, they can go up a little bit on their product, or what they do, or their services they do. A resident, you know, they're gonna have to just pay it. So, I mean, that's why you want to try to do higher on the commercial too. And then, you know, look at your commercial rates, and are your commercial customers, and see what kind of business they're in, and then. As long as you keep the rate classes together for the same time, we have some systems that actually will charge different flat rates for different meter sizes, but now you gotta start out at the very beginning, saying the residence is gonna have a three-quarter meter, and this business will have a one inch, and then this business will have a two inch. So, you could do that, but, but that would be a, a nightmare, because you'd have to, then you'd start going in, and some might be different. But I'm just telling you, there's different options, just make sure that whatever we do, we keep all our class codes the same.
Mayor, when you jumped in, you jumped the residential about seventy-five six a thousand after the first minimum, and that still puts you at a one-point-one-five. So, which is really a good place to be.
That's good.
And, uh, but you're at a one-point-one-five with these rates, it just depends on whatever y'all, whatever y'all'd like to do, you know.
Well, I, I, I know, I know this, the commercial that we've been talking about here, I know that's gonna add some money, but I, I think we need to make this, this thing leave, like, the one-point-one-five.
Yeah.
And if you do this other later, you'll add more to it, which you need, for all this, all this stuff we're trying to do.
And, and, yeah, I mean, let me say this.
One-point-one-five.
We're, we're, when we talk of one-point-one-five basically, we're saying that needs to be no lower.
Yeah, you, you need to at least do that.
You need to at least do that. Now, going higher, you know, that can help you maybe pay off the note a little quicker, that can help you do the things that you need to do, that can help you put money aside for meter. Here again, the only money we're putting aside here is what's required by USDA on reserve, and I don't know how much that is, for.
Fifteen percent of, fifteen percent of, of that, that one-point-one-five, that's one fifteen percent in reserve, right?
No, 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 no. USDA, you got, for each loan, you got three different, no, you got your enterprise where you put your monthly payment in, so they, every year they can go and get their money. Then you have a debt reserve, which you put in about ten percent of that payment in every month, till you get a note of, a year's payment.
Yeah, our tax.
Your tax, so y'all will live there, and so, so you don't have to do, you don't have to do that anymore. But that reserve account is, so if you don't make that first payment, they can get their money, they're gonna get their money one way or another.
Now, they can sweep, I move sixty-five thousand roughly every month.
Yeah.
You know, to put up for the note that USDA sweeps once a year.
Right, and then short-lived asset, do you, is it very big, do you know? And, and short-lived asset is money you set aside, so when you do have problems, you've got a little bit of money that you can put in to.
Yeah, we got three different accounts.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
I wanna talk, yes, about the commercial, what would be the rate, sixty dollars minimum for the water?
And ten dollars per thousand after one-hundred thousand.
And it's a residential, one-thousand gallons.
Every, everybody, everybody's one-thousand gallons.
Did you guys something on the, uh, the outside city limits, maybe?
Yeah, I would like to see the outside city limits.
Well, there's not many of them, but there.
Well, and.
Well, I want more than a dollar plus.
Yeah, the ten to ten-four.
They don't base.
Put them back in. Put them back at forty.
And, and here again, you see, this is your average user. That's not, that's not a thousand, that's not very much water.
One-point-nine-five out of thousand.
Yeah.
Look, look at this group, so you're saying that one-thousand right here. The zero to the thousand, this is commercial thousand, so instead of that, it's gonna be six.
For commercial?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
Residential outside city by a, what's it, three-six?
Residential outside is, is forty-one and eight dollars.
That's about the charge. What's the new rate, that's the breaking, y'all approved, that's.
Yeah, your residential outside of the city is paying eleven dollars for water. Residents.
Right, says they ordered that.
Plus they're paying. A dollar fifty, a dollar fifty one for thousand.
Right.
So they are paying more than your resident rate in the city.
Don't, uh, you talking about the outside residents? The only, here's the only problem, if you look at this, is you see that on the per thousand, they're only putting about twenty-seven cents in a month on the, on the usage, because their average usage is a thousand gallons a month. That's, that's the low. I don't know if you changed out meters, if you didn't, maybe sixteen years ago, did those get changed down?
Everything in the city got changed, everything.
Okay, outside cities too?
Yeah, I put twenty-six hundred meters in the right hand.
Well, I'd like to break my day more, I would like to do that test on those figures though, just, just see what we're at. In fact, it's gonna be, I guess, council, vote on that, is that right, Ray? To have them test the meter, yeah, that's no cost.
Like I said, the only, it, I don't know if you got the manpower to.
I'll make it there.
Well, and I think, what is it? I, I was talking with Kobe in the seat, but I think he can test like sixteen a day.
Sixteen?
Huh?
Twelve, I think he can do twelve.
Twelve a day. We'll, we'll pull a trailer up here, and, and we, we tie in, and what we, what we do is, we've got a known meter, and then we have a backup tank.
Last time y'all, they did it, they did it right on here.
Yeah, and, and so they can bring the meters, and, and what they do, we, he said we can do twelve a day, you know, and so, a week's probably worth, you know, but he gonna have to go out and just pull, randomly pull twelve.
Just 'cause he says it's twelve a day, don't seem like a lot, but you gotta go pull it, bring it over, let them do their thing, you gotta put something in there while they're testing it, so people can use water.
Yeah, have their water.
Then you go put, then after they get through, you go put the meter back, bring it on up.
It's a full, it's a full day's job for a.
Or longer.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's a full consumption test too, so if he, if Mike had twelve meters lined up, that Kobe came and started doing, it would take him all day. Well, it's a two, I'm considering the test too, so if he, if Mike had twelve meters lined up, and Kobe came and started doing it, it would take him all day to do those. And we're talking about eight hours, so, and, and not to cap, not even talking about what it's gonna take.
Yeah, but, but it's, the only cost it's gonna be to y'all is having somebody pull the meter.
What a lot of places do is, if they've got meters that are scratched up, and that kind of thing, to meet the criteria for checking, they'll go ahead and change those, and, um, have them all up here and just test them.
You could put a, you could put a jumper in there.
Last time, that's what I did, I put a ju, a straight line in.
Straight line, and you-
Mike, Mike, ten or twelve, he wanted, we went and pulled them, put a straight line in them, when he got through testing it, we would put it right back, and then we went and pulled, ran them in the next day.
But, but, I mean, it, it would help you to have the knowledge, but then let's face the fact, so if we find out those meters are bad, you still don't have the money to-
I can tell you now, the meters are bad.
Yeah.
They need to be replaced, and if we are able to ever do phase three, that's part of phase three, is replacing all the meters. Now, how much money it's gonna save us, I, I may for it, I don't know that they, to you there, but- That's the new line, when you get more labor, so.
And, one other thing, also to keep in mind, I mean, and, and you're gonna hear the word grants, and, and, and grants are great. I, I'm, I'm telling you, they are really, really great, but they, if you can get them, and then there's remax rate, you're gonna have to come up with twenty percent. Twenty five. So, so, you know, I mean, you get seventy five cents on the dollar, but if you don't have that twenty five cents in hand, you know, what do you do? I, and I don't know on, on your loans, how old they are, I mean, they're listed-
We got ways to go.
Hmm?
We got ways to go on them.
Are the interest rates pretty good?
Yeah, they're pretty good.
Okay. Yeah, and right now, the interest jumping up, but I mean, you, you can look at refinancing, but again, and probably with rates are in, you're probably way better off. Where they are. Sorry. We can, we can send that to her, if you want me, whatever, and, and look, we're here now.
We got any questions, yeah.
We gotta, yeah, we gotta be amended at six o'clock, six thirty in the morning, so until then, you know, you have thirty minutes to get there, but we're here for you.
What's the, what's this sustainability rate now, it's only on like one point four five.
So what we've got here? Just here one more, one time.
So that could bubble this in, and we can just like ability, right?
That's right.
And when you come back, recount like three gallons more.
We can come back, yeah, once we get that in from waiting, now. Let me tell you something else, let me, let me throw something else out, that if I'm gonna get shot, let's, let me get shot right. You jumped up when I said that. A lot of places now, I mean, one of the reasons why we're in this shape is, was loan, but another thing is, we don't go up as often as we should. And a lot of places now are starting to put in a CPI factor once a year. So, if the, if the consumer pricing index goes up two and a half percent, your water bill goes up two and a half percent every year. When was the last time y'all did a rate increase?
It's been over a year ago, isn't it?
We didn't make the big jump, though, did we?
No, we had, we had a thing we were supposed to have followed through the years, because it's been a long time since we've had that sheet, and we were supposed to follow it, but they got to where, well, I don't want it to go up this year because we're not doing any kind of work, and I hate to go up on the customer when we're not doing the work, but you didn't follow what they originally put it at.
Now, in, in, in COVID's years were totally different, because the CPI index jumped up anywhere from six to nine percent. But if you follow, you look at a lot of them, you know, they might not have gone up on rates for ten years, but then all of a sudden they had to jump up about thirty percent. Well, if you did that a little bit alone, that would be right along with the CPI.
If we would've stayed on track, we wouldn't be-
You wouldn't be here either.
No.
Yeah, so, so, you might wanna look at, at trying to implement something like that.
Like, like, say two and a half percent, they talked about that in our, uh, our deal, and, uh, they said two and a half to three percent every year.
Yeah.
For inflation was a good figure.
That's been pretty well the standard, like I said, and COVID made changes, and, and-
But it doesn't mean that you have to do that every year.
Does not mean to you.
You were doing great, everything, don't do the two point five.
Right.
But, but yet it would be automatic where you wouldn't have to deal with this.
You wouldn't have to deal with this, right?
I think that needs to happen, and with his election year, they wouldn't have to worry about it.
It's a big burden, also, the council's over there, whatever you know.
So do we put it on the agenda, do we have to do a ordinance, or?
Don't have to introduce an ordinance.
Introduce it Monday. And then we'll approve it the next Monday.
Okay.
I mean, and, and, like I said, if, if y'all want to, then we can come back and look at restructuring, you know, with, with the E D U's, but you're in a boat that's sinking, you need to plug the hole now, and then we can look at maybe coming back.
Yeah, I would like that, yeah, personally.
But, and, and we'd have to just get with the town, and, and we'd figure out what information, maybe they'll figure it out.
We should jump coming up and taking your time.
No, probably, we appreciate y'all supporting us too, and, and, and again, like I said, you know, we, we do appreciate it, and we need, one other thing, you know, maybe a little later on, we'd help you just send a letter to your representative, or your senators, and our boss, saying, you know, we appreciate what we did, and if, if it was helpful, do that, because that's where we get our funding from. And, and that, you know, we can tell the senator how much we do, but when y'all tell them, it makes a little bit different. Everybody's pretty well satisfied then?
Yep, you gotta give them a copy of that right there, for you.
So we can email that to you tomorrow, then you can get, and, y'all can, I'll get one then.
Get it to me, I'll have a copy for him, we have a free counsel meeting tomorrow, call him.
Okay, please, don't, let me free it in the morning.
You don't forget me, Mr. David.
Ma'am.
Don't forget me, Mr. David.
I'll remind you, I'll save it for later.
Oh, wait.
Yeah. Sure, thank y'all.
All right, thank y'all.